Okay. I should have done this, thank you very much, back to back. But now, I want to just check with one of our members who is supporting us with the sound, if we can then be able to indicate, can you just indicate to me if he is ready with the national anthem?
Ik wil zeker maken bij die klantpersoon of ons geleerd staan met die volkslied.
Ja, they have indicated that they are ready with the national anthem and they will request that we rise again and follow the national anthem and sing along, but also request that the males do not forget to take off our hats. Thank you very much. As I indicated, we have members of parliament here who have been given a responsibility by parliament to visit the whole country and this time around on the 31st of January, they happen to be in your area.
Onze leder van het nationale parlement, onze huidige stil op de innende derste januari, om die veld te voeren.
We will then conduct this meeting in accordance with the rules that have been given to us as members of parliament when we engage with the community.
Onze vergaderingen wordt licht met die reels voor die zulke skakelen.
The starting point is that I have been reliably informed that, I hope reliably, that in this meeting we will have five languages.
Ik heb gezegd dat ons vijftalig gaan gebruiken in hier de vergadering.
The first language is there behind me, the sign language. The second one is English. The third one, because I am informed there are people who, though they speak, they may not understand English, but they are, they speak Africans. We are going to use Southern Sutu. I haven't seen someone who is going to do a sit-down. Oh, besapumi, so we have never heard a sit-down right until now that you are in the house. So, I just wanted to check and confirm that if we use those languages, everybody will be covered. But number two, if you want to engage with the portfolio committee, if you speak English here on the microphone, there will not be any interpretation because all of them are so educated, they speak, they can understand English.
Als iemand Engels praat hier, met die leden van die commiteer, dan gaan ons dit niet vertalen, want die leden verstaan allemaal Engels. Maar als dit gedacht, dan een andere taal gepraat wordt, accommodeer ons vandaag Afrikaans, Sutu, Isikosa en ja, in Engels natuurlijk.
But you are free to address us in any of those lang, of any of the languages that you are comfortable with. You are actually free to speak to the committee in any language that you choose. We will interpret that for you.
Ik kan gerust met die commiteerleden praten, en een getaal van die geven ze, ons zal dit vertoeken en aan alle zulke blikken.
So you are testing me if my Afrikaans is okay? Okay, I'll try a bit. So, can I therefore confirm that we will all be together if we go that way?
Kan ik niet bevestigen dat die allemaal tevreden is als ons dit zo te werken?
Okay. Let me then start with our members to introduce themselves, then I will also indicate who else is here as part of this meeting other than the members of the committee who have joined us.
Als we begin nu met die leden, om die voor te stellen, dan gaan ze zelf voorstellen en dan gaan ze ons verneemmen of daar anderen die mensen in ons gewerkt is wat genoemd wordt.
My name is Dr. Carl Leroux, I am a medical doctor, I'm a member of the Health Portfolio Committee and I represent the Democratic Alliance. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for coming today and sharing with us your concerns and your input about this bill. Thank you.
Ik is meneer Carl Leroux, ik is een Amerikaanse dokter, ik heb 14 woorden die DA en ik spreek dankbaar voor iedereen vandaag.
Demealan, li na lame ke doktor Khosile Tlappe, ke le lokula Action SA ko parlemente en ke member ya de portfolio committee ya zamapilo.
Ik is doktor Khosile Tlappe, Action SA, ik is een lid van die parlement en van die portfolio commiteer.
My name is Patrick Mutubati, I'm from MK Party in Parliament, I'm the member of this portfolio committee.
Mijn naam is Patrick Mutubati, en ik ben een lid van MK, en ook lid van de portfolio commiteer.
Good morning, Demealan Bakayetu, li na lakake Masilosine, I'm from Northwest, I'm also a member of Parliament, a member of this portfolio committee on health, and I represent the African National Congress. Thank you.
Demealan, li vitola kake Masilosine, ke zo Northwest de, ke sitosa ANC, habeki emetse portfolio committeeena.
Mijn naam is Marcelo Sinne, ik kom van de Northwest Prefensive, ik heb 14 woorden die ANC en is een lid van die parlementaire portfolio commiteer.
Good morning, Sanbonani, li vitola kaka Fisanisha Bangu, ke zo akom Pumalanga, Nelsprit, I'm a member of African National Congress in Parliament, I'm a full member of this community, of this committee, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Fisanisha Bangu, I'm from Nelsprit, I'm a member of the ANC, I'm also a member of this committee.
Good morning, my name is Juliet Kumalo, I'm from Pumalanga, I'm the member of this committee, I'm representing the African National Congress in the National Assembly, thank you.
Demealan, li vitola kake Juliet Kumalo, ke zo am Pumalanga, ke sitosa ANC, habeki emetse committeeena.
Hallo, mijn naam is Juliet Kumalo, ik kom van Pumalanga, ik is een lid van die ANC en een permanente lid van die commiteer en lid van die nationale vergadering.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Philip van Staarden, I'm a member of Parliament and a member of West Committee, I'm representing the freedom front plus and I'm from Pretoria in Gauteng, thank you very much.
Demealan, li vitola kake Philip van Staarden, ke emetse FF plus, ke zo Pretoria, ke sitosa committeeena.
Ik is meneer Philip van Staarden, ik heb 14 woorden die vrijzonder plus, ik kom van Pretoria in Gauteng en ik is lid van die commiteer.
Okay, thank you very much for those introductions, a round of applause for the members who come here. They are, they are all over our country, but working largely in Cape Town, have been asked from the office in Cape Town to visit your area today. We have a representative from the office of the minister, he or she is seated over there, he is part of the stakeholders of this public hearing. Dit departement gee, ino mholiwayo, o tuñelwe la magai asliti na, gobba, mes hamba si o ter bantu, mamele, nyanzelekli baba ekona, ababa department, kwe, namshane guno, mama, ongo TTG Deputy Director General, Ms. Janet Hunter, net imbalonge lakemasukumelon.
We have Ms. Janet Hunter, who is the TTG of the department, who is also in the office of the minister, she is accompanied by other officials who are amongst us as well.
Among these officials, there are lawyers. This thing we are dealing with has got certain legal implications, so baba ekona, poba mabuelo, to listen and give advice if samba gashenama kune problem, let us see now. Ho baba mbaba sanka bana, bata ma lumuifona, honale bawe elen di ahend, melibona bati lekwanore, bato mamele, bato ma isotse na difela, bato ma katena. Okay, how is your source? Okay, let me assist, you then come after me. Amongst other people who are with Ms. Janet Hunter are lawyers, because what we are dealing with here is a matter that might need their insight and advise the department how things are flaring up in these meetings that we are part of.
Dank je, jullie hebben 14 woorden, ik kom uit onze stil om uit te komen vandaag en zijn de 14 woorden van de kantoor van de minister wat aan daar de kans zit, ons zitten hier in de directeur generalse kantoor met andere ambtenaren en andere procuriers wat ons heet, zodat als daar advies nodig is op zekere kwesties kan ons dit voor iedereen biedt. Zo bovenover misschien allemaal in Shanghai, hoezo waren ze maar goed, hoe kon je maar meer, maar me banggo tongwe, bozanzo was, bafa gipikatek, besin temma, mapte twentwintig, labandabashelila, labashelala, abam bango tongwe, sizonas, sobafaga, masfumanis, shalipans.
We are having a problem to accommodate those people who are leaning against the wall, because as I have said before that we are going to be able to cater for those people who are seated on the right or on the left-hand side, so that when the proceedings are commencing, they can come here and speak in the podium, only those who are seated in the seat, but those who are leaning against the wall will have to give them some other type, but will also cater specifically for those who are seated.
There are still gaps of chairs available, for my, for my land is now, nishalipans.
There are still other gaps, so that you can sit, must also check where you can be able to sit, so that you can be part of this meeting.
Ons zit een probleem met mensen, maar dat wordt in de minister, als ons allemaal beginnen in ons rode deelnemen, gaat het beter, wist dat je yellow pistolen is, daar is obstolen, daar is nog plek, als hij niet voor ons kan andei, waar dan nog openings is, langzie.
And can the parliamentary staff assist us with more chairs? Because when I went outside, so many people there, they told me they are organizing more chairs, and we need those more chairs.
Ons vraagt dat die leden van die parlement, die personnier voor ons helpen om hier stulen in de handen te krijgen.
Okay, right, kulunge leder, de kentek is ons, maar is veel afvastje. When those chairs come, parliamentary staff, when those chairs that you are bringing in come, you will bring back these chairs that are in the middle, but for now, let us request people to stand in to take the chairs that are here for them to sit, but when you bring the chairs from wherever you are getting them from, put them here on the, on the passage. Okay.
Ons vraagt dat die pistolen hier, en die pike is al in draai, en dat die zitplek is al in de handen, en die pike.
We would like to people to plead with you to say we start, there may be 10, 15 people still outside, and because it's hot here, we start, we hope they are not going to fight with us to say, why did you pray before we started with you? There are parliamentary staff that are supporting us in that table and this table, so that some of you who are very shy, like me, to speak on a mic, and you still want us to know something about this issue of what we are going to talk about, you are free to write your name, your cellphone number, and write your submission to any of these tables to say, give this to the portfolio committee members, they must read what I'm writing. I'm very, I'm scared to come here, my mother-in-law would not like me to come and speak in such meetings, so, but I can write.
Honale bata sanka, bata zo am parlemente, baba mbadu sita foleniya, baba mbadu sita foleniya, he kan kena, bawe bantu, baba mbalo, nabebab, kamso mumba na, lidichonza, baka pahama, bato buwa mona, balokuluile, baka ngolama, bitswa, bana, lidino morozwa, bana, lidichha isotza, bana, badi isemane, bato mbano, bate, batalose, se komitiena, ya se deso ya parlemente, ora na, ma ikuto, bana, ke afeng, mabapeli, lidita, bate na, se deso, tsotsa mona kajina.
Okay. As members of the portfolio committee on health, we found that there is a bill that is in Parliament brought by a department that works with us, which is health, and that bill has a name, that is tobacco, it's a Tobacco Control Bill of 2022 that we are going to talk about today.
Rili tchota parlemente, za komitiena, ya za bu pelobo, bote, rile ra fumanawore, honale sekamolaw kapabili, etli sitwenke, le fapa la za bu pelobo, bote, e mababi le tauolo ya hutzuba, juale, regile mona, mababi le bilena, etlo tsotsa ke schar. Als daar is nog mensen, bijna, voor ons was ons wel begint, ons was obstolen, ons wil niet zien als dan, als ik de school om voor die mensen te praten kan, je geschreven in Z Mark, ons zal laten die besondere geven als dat leder is, ons praat vandaag voor die wet op tabakbeheer van 2022.
The members of parliament who were in this committee before us, in the sixth administration, took this bill to seven other provinces, Free State was one of them.
maar nog niet in KwaZulu-Natal.
In Northern Cape.
In the North Cape, ja.
So, we also learned that even though Free State was visited, but they did two areas, and therefore to be uniform with other provinces where we had three meetings per province, we were then asked by parliament to visit Free State for just one more other public hearing on this bill.
Rile ra ituta, bana, kana kwe one, etse provinces ya Free State, hile hawa, mabatu en ama bedifela, yali abaren katra to ya, bana, hube ten, zaanoli, die provinces, eting se bana, hube, mabatu en ama raro, sana, ke ka hori, lele batur en le, le Free State leona, e fuman etse deso, etzana. Voor hen is twee areas in die Free State, reeds besucht met die wetsontwerp, en nu hebben onze derde openbare verwerking een lijn te wees met die andere provincies in die land, wat al drie, allemaal al drie vergaderings gehad is.
We have been informed as a portfolio committee that there has been some engagements with the community just to give them an understanding what this bill is all about, and your understanding therefore is going to make you to engage with us, having reflected or still reading the bill, to say what are you saying as a community on this bill?
Re tibisi, re le komitiena, bana, hile habateng, de ko pano, se bana, hutzona, one hutse, etwa ditabate, ama nang, le misabetsi ona, e ro, tle, tle, kwanu, ele kaspe, sa bana, lele lebele, lese, ila bana, hasa, le tla kwanu, kiengye, le tla ibuaka, ele tla buaka, bana, la ilore, senze, le filwe, lipampir, tse na, bana, li imata, fatse, katsa bana, le tiba, kana kwe le lokoluang, le tla tiba, bana, le buaka. Ons heet met die portfolio commiteer geskakeld om aan hulp te vertellen precies waar we hier die wetgeving gaan, zodat hulp kan verstaan en dat hulp kan voor iedereen komen vertijdelijk, waar we dit als handel.
So for me as a chair is to just take less than 10 minutes to indicate and highlight this bill as to what actually it is seeking to do, and therefore engage with you on the mic there to give us your input.
Na yalo kama du lasu, lohaka, or ke sa ise, sellele kela, sa sekamolaw kapabili ena, bana, e mababili, meke tlan kama, zuzwe, kapabali, shoma fela, weetza, yalo, weetze za, or hasa ke tretile, ebele, le ona, le fumanamunye, sa wa, or kloetse, se tammo, bana, re bana, yalo, kava fela, yapi. Dit is van mij opgedraaid om een minder als tien minuten, precies voor iedereen te vertellen waar we die wetgeving gaan, en dan iedereen sitte on the word, dawgwe.
The starting point is a Tobacco Act of 1993, which is what Dr. Kosa Zanazaminizuma, the first Minister of Health, was championing.
Se or etla kalakasona, kimola o wata oloya, hutzuba hawa kwa, wa 1993, hile wata hola, tele, tonala, misstengye, onele, doktor Kosa Zanazaminizuma, ke misabetsi o, e bana, re mona, kao, bana, bawi le wata hola, bana, bata renzeretza, bana, bana. Ons begin bij die wet op tabak van 1993, wat wisselijk gedrijf is door doktor Kosa Zanazaminizuma.
That bill, that act has since been amended three times, 1999, 2007, and 2008.
Mola o, officiala, yalo, ose, oshumatisi, tama, kato, ama raro, kadi le motse, ose se in die badi. Die wet is drie keer gewijzigd, onder andere in 1999, 2007, en während 2008.
Yeah, I am not aware, at the time we started the meeting, we were to be welcomed by a leader from the municipality, and at the time we started, there was no one yet. I don't know whether that is still the situation right now, but if there is someone who recognizes a leader from the municipality who was tasked to come and welcome us into this meeting, I will then wait to be informed.
Ik heb 14 woorden die vrijzonder plus, ik kom van Pretoria in Gauteng, en ik is lid van die commiteer.
Okay, thank you very much for those introductions, a round of applause for the members who come here. They are, they are all over our country, but working largely in Cape Town, have been asked from the office in Cape Town to visit your area today.
Re tsa, li bakke, nsefapa, fapanenka, roho na, empa, re tsa, pame, kwanamuseka, pame, tatingwa, yale, rerumile, or re tsa, kwanu, holu. Ilok ngeniljenjinan, beba, bate tis tros, labastu li ga is tros, go, ama siye, gula ba, abas, ngunkile, nabas, hambile, guno, party so omku, guno, party, we department, elo, officini, le, la minister, okona, la parati, weyto, o, 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 baba, u, hatla, he is representing, o minister, okona, na, ngela, pemva.
We have a representative from the office of the minister, he or she is seated over there, he is part of the stakeholders of this public hearing.
It department gee, ino mholiwayo, o tuñelwe la magai asliti na, gobba, mes hamba si o ter bantu, mamele, nyanzelekli baba ekona, ababa department, kwe, namshane guno, mama, ongo TTG Deputy Director General, Ms. Janet Hunter, net imbalonge lakemasukumelon.
We have Ms. Janet Hunter, who is the TTG of the department, who is also in the office of the minister, she is accompanied by other officials who are amongst us as well.
Among these officials, there are lawyers. This thing we are dealing with has got certain legal implications, so baba ekona, poba mabuelo, to listen and give advice if samba gashenama kune problem, let us see now.
Ho baba mbaba sanka bana, bata ma lumuifona, honale bawe elen di ahend, melibona bati lekwanore, bato mamele, bato ma isotse na difela, bato ma katena.
Okay, how is your source? Okay, let me assist, you then come after me. Amongst other people who are with Ms. Janet Hunter are lawyers, because what we are dealing with here is a matter that might need their insight and advise the department how things are flaring up in these meetings that we are part of.
Opakati gee, kaba, ababa, no, mama, Janet Hunter.
Ah, is it tete wale, tete wale, is van Afrikaans go.
Dank je, jullie hebben 14 woorden, ik kom uit onze stil om uit te komen vandaag en zijn de 14 woorden van de kantoor van de minister wat aan daar de kans zit, ons zitten hier in de directeur generalse kantoor met andere ambtenaren en andere procuriers wat ons heet, zodat als daar advies nodig is op zekere kwesties kan ons dit voor iedereen biedt. Zo bovenover misschien allemaal in Shanghai, hoezo waren ze maar goed, hoe kon je maar meer, maar me banggo tongwe, bozanzo was, bafa gipikatek, besin temma, mapte twentwintig.
We are having a problem to accommodate those people who are leaning against the wall, because as I have said before that we are going to be able to cater for those people who are seated on the right or on the left-hand side, so that when the proceedings are commencing, they can come here and speak in the podium, only those who are seated in the seat, but those who are leaning against the wall will have to give them some other type, but will also cater specifically for those who are seated.
There are still gaps of chairs available, for my, for my land is now, nishalipans.
There are still other gaps, so that you can sit, must also check where you can be able to sit, so that you can be part of this meeting.
Ons zit een probleem met mensen, maar dat wordt in de minister, als ons allemaal beginnen in ons rode deelnemen, gaat het beter, wist dat je yellow pistolen is, daar is obstolen, daar is nog plek, als hij niet voor ons kan andei, waar dan nog openings is, langzie.
And can the parliamentary staff assist us with more chairs? Because when I went outside, so many people there, they told me they are organizing more chairs, and we need those more chairs.
Ons vraagt dat die leden van die parlement, die personnier voor ons helpen om hier stulen in de handen te krijgen.
Okay, right, kulunge leder, de kentek is ons, maar is veel afvastje. When those chairs come, parliamentary staff, when those chairs that you are bringing in come, you will bring back these chairs that are in the middle, but for now, let us request people to stand in to take the chairs that are here for them to sit, but when you bring the chairs from wherever you are getting them from, put them here on the, on the passage. Okay.
Ons vraagt dat die pistolen hier, en die pike is al in draai, en dat die zitplek is al in de handen, en die pike.
We would like to people to plead with you to say we start, there may be 10, 15 people still outside, and because it's hot here, we start, we hope they are not going to fight with us to say, why did you pray before we started with you? There are parliamentary staff that are supporting us in that table and this table, so that some of you who are very shy, like me, to speak on a mic, and you still want us to know something about this issue of what we are going to talk about, you are free to write your name, your cellphone number, and write your submission to any of these tables to say, give this to the portfolio committee members, they must read what I'm writing. I'm very, I'm scared to come here, my mother-in-law would not like me to come and speak in such meetings, so, but I can write.
Honale bata sanka, bata zo am parlemente, baba mbadu sita foleniya, baba mbadu sita foleniya, he kan kena, bawe bantu, baba mbalo, nabebab, kamso mumba na, lidichonza, baka pahama, bato buwa mona, balokuluile, baka ngolama, bitswa, bana, lidino morozwa, bana, lidichha isotza, bana, badi isemane, bato mbano, bate, batalose, se komitiena, ya se deso ya parlemente, ora na, ma ikuto, bana, ke afeng, mabapeli, lidita, bate na, se deso, tsotsa mona kajina.
Okay. As members of the portfolio committee on health, we found that there is a bill that is in Parliament brought by a department that works with us, which is health, and that bill has a name, that is tobacco, it's a Tobacco Control Bill of 2022 that we are going to talk about today.
Rili tchota parlemente, za komitiena, ya za bu pelobo, bote, rile ra fumanawore, honale sekamolaw kapabili, etli sitwenke, le fapa la za bu pelobo, bote, e mababi le tauolo ya hutzuba, juale, regile mona, mababi le bilena, etlo tsotsa ke schar. Als daar is nog mensen, bijna, voor ons was ons wel begint, ons was obstolen, ons wil niet zien als dan, als ik de school om voor die mensen te praten kan, je geschreven in Z Mark, ons zal laten die besondere geven als dat leder is, ons praat vandaag voor die wet op tabakbeheer van 2022.
The members of parliament who were in this committee before us, in the sixth administration, took this bill to seven other provinces, Free State was one of them.
Leder van die zesde administratie heeft al naar zeven provincies gegaan met die wetsontwerp, maar nog niet in KwaZulu-Natal.
In Northern Cape.
In the North Cape, ja.
So, we also learned that even though Free State was visited, but they did two areas, and therefore to be uniform with other provinces where we had three meetings per province, we were then asked by parliament to visit Free State for just one more other public hearing on this bill.
Rile ra ituta, bana, kana kwe one, etse provinces ya Free State, hile hawa, mabatu en ama bedifela, yali abaren katra to ya, bana, hube ten, zaanoli, die provinces, eting se bana, hube, mabatu en ama raro, sana, ke ka hori, lele batur en le, le Free State leona, e fuman etse deso, etzana. Voor hen is twee areas in die Free State, reeds besucht met die wetsontwerp, en nu hebben onze derde openbare verwerking een lijn te wees met die andere provincies in die land, wat al drie, allemaal al drie vergaderings gehad is.
We have been informed as a portfolio committee that there has been some engagements with the community just to give them an understanding what this bill is all about, and your understanding therefore is going to make you to engage with us, having reflected or still reading the bill, to say what are you saying as a community on this bill?
Re tibisi, re le komitiena, bana, hile habateng, de ko pano, se bana, hutzona, one hutse, etwa ditabate, ama nang, le misabetsi ona, e ro, tle, tle, kwanu, ele kaspe, sa bana, lele lebele, lese, ila bana, hasa, le tla kwanu, kiengye, le tla ibuaka, ele tla buaka, bana, la ilore, senze, le filwe, lipampir, tse na, bana, li imata, fatse, katsa bana, le tiba, kana kwe le lokoluang, le tla tiba, bana, le buaka. Ons heet met die portfolio commiteer geskakeld om aan hulp te vertellen precies waar we hier die wetgeving gaan, zodat hulp kan verstaan en dat hulp kan voor iedereen komen vertijdelijk, waar we dit als handel.
So for me as a chair is to just take less than 10 minutes to indicate and highlight this bill as to what actually it is seeking to do, and therefore engage with you on the mic there to give us your input.
Na yalo kama du lasu, lohaka, or ke sa ise, sellele kela, sa sekamolaw kapabili ena, bana, e mababili, meke tlan kama, zuzwe, kapabali, shoma fela, weetza, yalo, weetze za, or hasa ke tretile, ebele, le ona, le fumanamunye, sa wa, or kloetse, se tammo, bana, re bana, yalo, kava fela, yapi. Dit is van mij opgedraaid om een minder als tien minuten, precies voor iedereen te vertellen waar we hier die wetgeving gaan, en dan iedereen sitte on the word, dawgwe.
The starting point is a Tobacco Act of 1993, which is what Dr. Kosa Zanazaminizuma, the first Minister of Health, was championing.
Se or etla kalakasona, kimola o wata oloya, hutzuba hawa kwa, wa 1993, hile wata hola, tele, tonala, misstengye, onele, doktor Kosa Zanazaminizuma, ke misabetsi o, e bana, re mona, kao, bana, bawi le wata hola, bana, bata renzeretza, bana, bana. Ons begin bij die wet op tabak van 1993, wat wisselijk gedrijf is door doktor Kosa Zanazaminizuma.
That bill, that act has since been amended three times, 1999, 2007, and 2008.
Mola o, officiala, yalo, ose, oshumatisi, tama, kato, ama raro, kadi le motse, ose se in die badi. Die wet is drie keer gewijzigd, onder andere in 1999, 2007, en während 2008.
Yeah, I am not aware, at the time we started the meeting, we were to be welcomed by a leader from the municipality, and at the time we started, there was no one yet. I don't know whether that is still the situation right now, but if there is someone who recognizes a leader from the municipality who was tasked to come and welcome us into this meeting, I will then wait to be informed.
Ik heb 14 woorden die vrijzonder plus, ik kom van Pretoria in Gauteng, en ik is lid van die commiteer.
Okay, thank you very much for those introductions, a round of applause for the members who come here. They are, they are all over our country, but working largely in Cape Town, have been asked from the office in Cape Town to visit your area today.
Re tsa, li bakke, nsefapa, fapanenka, roho na, empa, re tsa, pame, kwanamuseka, pame, tatingwa, yale, rerumile, or re tsa, kwanu, holu. Ilok ngeniljenjinan, beba, bate tis tros, labastu li ga is tros, go, ama siye, gula ba, abas, ngunkile, nabas, hambile, guno, party so omku, guno, party, we department, elo, officini, le, la minister, okona, la parati, weyto, o, 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 baba, u, hatla, he is representing, o minister, okona, na, ngela, pemva.
We have a representative from the office of the minister, he or she is seated over there, he is part of the stakeholders of this public hearing.
It department gee, ino mholiwayo, o tuñelwe la magai asliti na, gobba, mes hamba si o ter bantu, mamele, nyanzelekli baba ekona, ababa department, kwe, namshane guno, mama, ongo TTG Deputy Director General, Ms. Janet Hunter, net imbalonge lakemasukumelon.
We have Ms. Janet Hunter, who is the TTG of the department, who is also in the office of the minister, she is accompanied by other officials who are amongst us as well.
Among these officials, there are lawyers. This thing we are dealing with has got certain legal implications, so baba ekona, poba mabuelo, to listen and give advice if samba gashenama kune problem, let us see now.
Ho baba mbaba sanka bana, bata ma lumuifona, honale bawe elen di ahend, melibona bati lekwanore, bato mamele, bato ma isotse na difela, bato ma katena.
Okay, how is your source? Okay, let me assist, you then come after me. Amongst other people who are with Ms. Janet Hunter are lawyers, because what we are dealing with here is a matter that might need their insight and advise the department how things are flaring up in these meetings that we are part of.
Opakati gee, kaba, ababa, no, mama, Janet Hunter.
Ah, is it tete wale, tete wale, is van Afrikaans go.
Dank je, jullie hebben 14 woorden, ik kom uit onze stil om uit te komen vandaag en zijn de 14 woorden van de kantoor van de minister wat aan daar de kans zit, ons zitten hier in de directeur generalse kantoor met andere ambtenaren en andere procuriers wat ons heet, zodat als daar advies nodig is op zekere kwesties kan ons dit voor iedereen biedt. Zo bovenover misschien allemaal in Shanghai, hoezo waren ze maar goed, hoe kon je maar meer, maar me banggo tongwe, bozanzo was, bafa gipikatek, besin temma, mapte twentwintig.
We are having a problem to accommodate those people who are leaning against the wall, because as I have said before that we are going to be able to cater for those people who are seated on the right or on the left-hand side, so that when the proceedings are commencing, they can come here and speak in the podium, only those who are seated in the seat, but those who are leaning against the wall will have to give them some other type, but will also cater specifically for those who are seated.
There are still gaps of chairs available, for my, for my land is now, nishalipans.
There are still other gaps, so that you can sit, must also check where you can be able to sit, so that you can be part of this meeting.
Ons zit een probleem met mensen, maar dat wordt in de minister, als ons allemaal beginnen in ons rode deelnemen, gaat het beter, wist dat je yellow pistolen is, daar is obstolen, daar is nog plek, als hij niet voor ons kan andei, waar dan nog openings is, langzie.
And can the parliamentary staff assist us with more chairs? Because when I went outside, so many people there, they told me they are organizing more chairs, and we need those more chairs.
Ons vraagt dat die leden van die parlement, die personier voor ons helpen om hier stulen in de handen te krijgen.
Okay, right, kulunge leder, de kentek is ons, maar is veel afvastje. When those chairs come, parliamentary staff, when those chairs that you are bringing in come, you will bring back these chairs that are in the middle, but for now, let us request people to stand in to take the chairs that are here for them to sit, but when you bring the chairs from wherever you are getting them from, put them here on the, on the passage. Okay.
Ons vraagt dat die pistolen hier, en die pike is al in draai, en dat die zitplek is al in de handen, en die pike.
We would like to people to plead with you to say we start, there may be 10, 15 people still outside, and because it's hot here, we start, we hope they are not going to fight with us to say, why did you pray before we started with you? There are parliamentary staff that are supporting us in that table and this table, so that some of you who are very shy, like me, to speak on a mic, and you still want us to know something about this issue of what we are going to talk about, you are free to write your name, your cellphone number, and write your submission to any of these tables to say, give this to the portfolio committee members, they must read what I'm writing. I'm very, I'm scared to come here, my mother-in-law would not like me to come and speak in such meetings, so, but I can write.
Honale bata sanka, bata zo am parlemente, baba mbadu sita foleniya, baba mbadu sita foleniya, he kan kena, bawe bantu, baba mbalo, nabebab, kamso mumba na, lidichonza, baka pahama, bato buwa mona, balokuluile, baka ngolama, bitswa, bana, lidino morozwa, bana, lidichha isotza, bana, badi isemane, bato mbano, bate, batalose, se komitiena, ya se deso ya parlemente, ora na, ma ikuto, bana, ke afeng, mabapeli, lidita, bate na, se deso, tsotsa mona kajina.
Okay. As members of the portfolio committee on health, we found that there is a bill that is in Parliament brought by a department that works with us, which is health, and that bill has a name, that is tobacco, it's a Tobacco Control Bill of 2022 that we are going to talk about today.
Rili tchota parlemente, za komitiena, ya za bu pelobo, bote, rile ra fumanawore, honale sekamolaw kapabili, etli sitwenke, le fapa la za bu pelobo, bote, e mababili, le tauolo ya hutzuba, juale, regile mona, mababili, le bilena, etlo tsotsa ke schar. Als daar is nog mensen, bijna, voor ons was ons wel begint, ons was obstolen, ons wil niet zien als dan, als ik de school om voor die mensen te praten kan, je geschreven in Z Mark, ons zal laten die besondere geven als dat leder is, ons praat vandaag voor die wet op tabakbeheer van 2022.
The members of parliament who were in this committee before us, in the sixth administration, took this bill to seven other provinces, Free State was one of them.
Leider van die zesde administratie heeft al naar zeven provincies gegaan met die wetsontwerp, maar nog niet in KwaZulu-Natal.
In Northern Cape.
In the North Cape, ja.
So, we also learned that even though Free State was visited, but they did two areas, and therefore to be uniform with other provinces where we had three meetings per province, we were then asked by parliament to visit Free State for just one more other public hearing on this bill.
Rile ra ituta, bana, kana kwe one, etse provinces ya Free State, hile hawa, mabatu en ama bedifela, yali abaren katra to ya, bana, hube ten, zaanoli, die provinces, eting se bana, hube, mabatu en ama raro, sana, ke ka hori, lele batur en le, le Free State leona, e fuman etse deso, etzana. Voor hen is twee areas in die Free State, reeds besucht met die wetsontwerp, en nu hebben onze derde openbare verwerking een lijn te wees met die andere provincies in die land, wat al drie, allemaal al drie vergaderings gehad is.
We have been informed as a portfolio committee that there has been some engagements with the community just to give them an understanding what this bill is all about, and your understanding therefore is going to make you to engage with us, having reflected or still reading the bill, to say what are you saying as a community on this bill?
Re tibisi, re le komitiena, bana, hile habateng, de ko pano, se bana, hutzona, one hutse, etwa ditabate, ama nang, le misabetsi ona, e ro, tle, tle, kwanu, ele kaspe, sa bana, lele lebele, lese, ila bana, hasa, le tla kwanu, kiengye, le tla ibuaka, ele tla buaka, bana, la ilore, senze, le filwe, lipampir, tse na, bana, li imata, fatse, katsa bana, le tiba, kana kwe le lokoluang, le tla tiba, bana, le buaka.
On health. We found that there is a bill that is in parliament brought by a department that works with us, which is health. And that bill has a name that is tobacco. I can't read it. It's a Tobacco Control Bill of 2022 that we are going to talk about today.
We found that there is a tobacco control bill of 2022 that we are going to talk about today. We found that there is a tobacco control bill of 2022 that we are going to talk about today. We found that there is a tobacco control bill of 2022
There is no more than one person. We have to start from the beginning. We have to start from the beginning. As I come to the people, I can write a letter. The special people here, as they are. We talked about the tobacco ban from 2022.
The members of parliament who were in this committee before us in the sixth administration took this bill to seven other provinces. Free State was one of them. But in...
The leader of the sixth administration has gone to seven provinces with the tobacco ban, but not in KwaZulu-Natal.
In Northern Cape.
In the North Cape.
So, we also learned that even though Free State was visited, but they did two areas. And therefore, to be uniform with other provinces where we had three meetings per province, we were then asked by parliament to visit Free State for just one more other public hearing on this bill.
Before this, there were two areas in the Free State. First, the tobacco ban. Now, our third open bar forum in line to be with the other provinces in the land that all three, all the, all three, uh, have had.
We have been informed as a portfolio committee that there has been some engagements with the community just to give them an understanding what this bill is all about. And your understanding, therefore, is going to make you to engage with us, having reflected or still reading the bill, to say, "What are you saying as a community on this bill?"
We have been asked by the committee to tell them precisely what we are giving them so that they can understand it and that they can tell us precisely what we are doing.
So for me, as a chair, is to just take less than 10 minutes to indicate and highlight this bill as to what actually it is seeking to do and therefore engage with you on the mic there to give us your input.
This is my request, about ten minutes, to precisely tell us precisely what we are giving them and on what we are doing.
The starting point is a Tobacco Act of 1993, which is what Dr. Kosa Zanazamini Zuma, the first Minister of Health, was championing.
We start with the tobacco ban from 1993, which was strongly encouraged by Dr. Kosa Zanazamini Zuma.
That bill, that act, has since been amended three times. 1999, 2007, and 2008.
The tobacco was repeatedly reinforced, among others, in 1999, 2007, and during 2008.
Yeah, I am not aware. At the time we started the meeting, we were to be welcomed by a leader from the municipality. At the time we started, there was no one yet. I don't know whether that is still the situation right now. But if there is someone who recognizes a leader from the municipality who was tasked to come and welcome us into this meeting, I will then wait to be informed.
We have spoken with the mayor of the municipality. As he said, from the municipality, what we are here for, we are here to welcome them. Then I know for sure the explanation.
The Department of Health in its own thinking said, instead of amending this act for time around, like I said, there was another amendment, 1998, 1997, rather than, because there's been some fundamental issues that have come in from the industry, better they bring a new bill to be translated if it goes through into a new act.
The Department of Health has said that instead of reinforcing the tobacco, there are fundamental questions that we need to change and the explanation that comes from the industry. And therefore, it is a new way down.
The tobacco industry has been working and they have been innovative. And therefore, there are certain things that have come into the space that is worrying those who are for public health and therefore want to introduce this. It was at the time of Dr. Kosa Zanazamini Zuma, we did not have something that looked like vaping or those things where you start standing here and then you smoke something from that far. Everybody's smoking and then... So those are new things coming in from the industry. And therefore, there is something, therefore, to bring into regulating those processes.
The tobacco industry is very innovative. And the new innovations are very beneficial to us. We have made it better. Under open bar, health, uh, full, uh, under other, with vaping, that there are new regulated processes that need to be brought about.
The full name of this bill is called Tobacco Products and Electronic Delivery System Control Bill. So there is a wet control. It seeks more to regulate, improve control than to completely ban smoking or cigarettes.
The tobacco ban, uh, I can't read it. They want to ban tobacco. 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 But tobacco, they want to ban tobacco.
The title of the tobacco product, the tobacco products, and cigarettes, certainly, uh, appreciate for us a greater part of the year. It's going to be a year, rather than to forbid.
Within the bigger picture of not, of controlling and not banning, there are two other sub... focus of the bill that seeks to ban, B-A-N, not to ban like fire, to remove it from existing ban.
Man, it's a, uh, 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 uh,
The focus here is to print it out, seeing from the year, rather than to forbid.
The bill seeks to ban, uh, having cigarettes or the tobacco products on vending machines in the malls, anywhere else. Because the understanding is that anybody who's got money, whether you're a 10-year-old or a 12-year-old, you can use that vending machine to dispense, uh, tobacco products. So there is a complete ban on vending machines all over the country to display, to have, uh, tobacco products in them.
The tobacco product is banned from all vending machines. The risk is that vending machines, cigarettes, are restricted to children.
The bill also seeks to ban availability of tobacco products on kiosks. When you go to certain malls and shops, there's a display there, whatever, that is there. So it says, it must not be displayed at the point of sale, but rather be available when you ask for it, either underneath the table or somewhere else, but not to display it on the shops and every place of, uh, of sale as it is currently the situation.
The tobacco ban is banned, and it is forbidden from cigarettes and tobacco products in kiosks, such as for example, in vunckelcentres. And it might not be allowed in a vunckel or by the vending area, it cannot be allowed. You have to ask for it.
Those are the two bans. I'll put the three which are not bans together. Then the members who are interpreting will do this, the three together. The bill has a case for plain packaging, that rather than it is glossy, looking nice, display, it must be a plain packaging. Two, it must have visible warnings that says, "By the way, smoking is dangerous." Smoking, so those things must be visible. And the department thinks that if it is a plain packaging with the visibility of those, uh, writings, it could go a long way towards making people not to be attracted to this. The last one, so I've said, the bill, therefore, while it does not ban tobacco, it is planning to decrease easy access to tobacco products.
There are two bans in place. The first is that cigarettes products do not have more handsmaking opinion and, uh, it cannot be allowed. And there must be clear instructions on the products that people are compelled to smoke. And that can make people, and that will not allow people to smoke or that will not allow people to access tobacco products.
Uh, there is information that, uh, per year in the world, eight people, eight million people do die on tobacco-related illnesses.
It is estimated that there are about 8 million people per year sick of tobacco products.
Now, there is also some information that comes in through those who are doing scientific work that... There is 1.2 million people in the world who have decided not to smoke, but have been, they have been affected by the smoking that takes place around themselves.
The explanation of the tobacco, see for us, that there are about 1.2 million people. It is not allowed, but it is affected by other people.
You know already now that in some places, in particular places, planes and airports, you don't smoke in particular areas. But there are people already encroaching into wherever they smoke, it is like a right to smoke and not a right for anyone not to wish to be having smoke on their faces. Because there's hardly a time when those, so there's, there's going to be an expansion of where could people smoke in the light of this research work to say, there are other people who go past you and they are non-smokers. They get affected in the environment because they happen to be in the space that people are smoking at.
Our tobacco brand has certain places where we are not allowed. But there is actually an incentive that is right to come in our environment. And they focus on the right to smoke, rather than the people's right not to smoke. Uh, and not smoking is not like this.
It is wrong, it is wrong. And we are now at a stage where I'm going to open up for members of the community to indicate, "I support this bill that says this, I do not support this bill." Uh, we would want to hear that based on what actually has been given to you prior to us coming here and some of the things I've shared with you, focusing on improving the public health of the citizens of our country.
We are now at the stadium where we have been talking to the community and we are going to say if we are willing to stand or not stand. And this is based on what the leaders of the community said, what we have brought to them. And the focus here is on the improvement of the country's health care service.
Can just someone indicate to me? I've seen about 15 people here as to how many people on that side. While that is being done, we will then say everybody who is on this side will be group one. This part is group two. How many have there? Twenty-five. That will be group three. Okay.
And we have group here, on the right side, from the south, group two, there, and on the other, group three, is the 25 people that are on the left side. And we have learned that you can give us your comment or your question.
We normally have chairs that are in the centre. So that if you indicate you want to engage with the committee, you just leave your chair, come to the centre. But because of the chair that we do have now, if you indicate you want to speak to the committee, you will then move with your chair and come to the centre. But don't fight because, uh, there will be a long line that goes right down there. If you get an opportunity to speak, uh, in the podium regarding this bill, please be very brief. Tell us your name, your surname, which place you come from, for instance, which what committee, do you support or you don't support the bill? Not what committee, just a what. You may not be a what committee member, just a what. Okay.
Our friend, when he spreads, he will be, and he is invited from group one, two, or three, that he will bring his stool and sit in the middle part, he will come back. And there is, and then every, uh, experience is given to talk. Then our friend, he will give his name, his background, and say where he came. Then he, uh, submission, and, uh, uh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I've been informed that there is a leader from district municipality who has since joined us. So maybe before we take hands, I will recognize that leader and request that leader to welcome us in our area and take it from there.
Uh, thank you, Program Director. I'm councillor Mputse Mulae from Karib District. Uh, let me welcome you all, members of parliament, media and audience. You are welcome in this district. As, as... Councillor Mputse Mulae.
I am councillor Mulae, a local councillor here. And that is my first, I'm welcome to you, the leaders of the committee, the media, as well as the people.
Uh, you must feel free, members of parliament and the audience. You are welcome in Karib District. Uh, we also, as the Karib District acknowledges, the Tobacco Bill, which covers both health and economics trade amongst those who smoke and their families. Thank you very much, Chappess.
We are welcome, and we are grateful to the committee. Uh, and we will not say that tobacco products can economically lose place of people, but it must break.
No, thank you very much, councillor, for that warm welcome to all of us.
Thank you, councillor, for the welcome, and we are happy.
Okay, let us start this side. Those who want to engage with the portfolio committee, may, may they please raise their hands? Right. Let me also request, because this bill has got a national footprint and there are national, there are people who have been travelling nationally with this bill, that they will take the backseat, uh, in this bill. And, uh, thank you very much. There's just one who has dropped his hand, I know him. It will be later that I recognize. So I will start with the local residents, citizens of our country. Do remind me to come back to you, uh, when you are done. Your hands again. Okay let me give you numbers white chair you are number one just hold on don't raise them don't confuse our way there's a second process just behind you you are number two eh that brother there you are number three and eh gentlemen I think which class is you are number four there's a lady behind you number five and that hand you are number six please in that order take your chairs come to the center.
Ik geet nummers toegeken aan die sprekers in die eerste blok ik vraag dat ie aan die middel te bewegen en dan één voor één eh ie stikie lever.
Right eh Abekho faras abbas o suke trinie ba furo moye gapa message lulilina da eh ko beses lulil eh angabu konzo so furo moye ngada. Right when you finish here engaging with us take your chair.
Talk to the interpreter as i klar gepraat is neem als plever is tot terug.
Once you are done engaging with us you can take your chair back to where you were seated. Okay there was a mini caucus between eh the Sutu interpreter and the first participant Niti. Oh okay yes thank you very much hundred percent I give you I'll give you a banana when I finish here. Let's start okay if the participants speak English because they are engaging with us is fine if then he speaks Sutu then the southern Sutu interpreter must be ready to assist us if he speaks Africans then the Africans interpreter must be ready to to do that so you are free to speak any language but you are right eh we will hear they will hear as you start that you are speaking this language and by the way you are free you are free to mix you mix all four. Okay.
Als ie Engels wil praat met die commitees ie bij welkom daar zal geen toekomst dan optrainie while ie echter Sutu Afrikaans of ik nu eens grozer praat eh zal die toekomst dan voor ie kom bij staan.
Okay let us therefore start.
Eh thank you very much and thanks for the welcome my name is Cedric Klaku from Bocavelo what three I am against this bill in its current form I'm a scientist by profession I hold a masters of science degree in public nutrition now my comments focuses specifically on the preamble of the bill nicotine is incorrectly classified as a toxic substance this statement needs to be corrected now nicotine is a naturally occurring compound found in various plants including tobacco nicotine is not toxic nor is it carcinogenic now the FDA the IARC and a public health body in Sweden have shown that its use is not associated with cancer or smoking related diseases what causes smoking related diseases is the burning therefore of tobacco now in twenty twenty one Public Health England indicated that four out of ten smokers and ex smokers wrongly think nicotine causes most smoking related cancers when evidence shows that nicotine actually carries minimal risk of harm now nicotine replacement therapies which are approved by public health regulators worldwide contain nicotine if nicotine is toxic why would regulators who are mandated to protect the health of the population approve a toxic substance now the preamble should only state that nicotine is addictive however it is not a toxic substance thank you very much.
Eh just repeat for me you have a masters in public what?
In in public nutrition.
Public nutrition.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you eh because I might get into the mic and speak for or against the bill. We will not eh actually encourage clapping of the hands. Because next time I speak something different you might be tempted to boo me. So we request members of the public not to clap hands after each and every speaker.
Ons verschuiven van die de van die publiek om als ze pleef nie gedene die verlichtingen handen te klapt nie dit is nie nodig nie.
Dit is nie nodig nie eh okay thank you number two.
Thank you Chaperson for the opportunity to speak eh my name is David Masruin and I'm a member of Democratic Alliance. Chair let's start here tobacco and vapor are legal products in South Africa that industry is actually legal and not illegal now the question do I support the bill no not at its current form and the reasons and eh as follows I want to just recommend some amendments that eh may need to be done there should be clear distinction between delivery systems of tobacco eh and vapor and those that are not eh harmful the health risks are not the same and I want to talk I'm just talking in general emissions eh from both are not the same I think vapor they say is just a cloud of water and whereas eh with tobacco it's a different story eh they cannot be grouped together when we deal with delivery systems because at the moment the bill appears to be grouping everything together and my friend eh explained to my earlier colleague explained about nicotine so we need to talk about eh reasonableness and unreasonableness eh of this bill some of the clauses here are vague and and creates uncertainty for example public space it talks about public space why don't we say any place accessible to public regardless of ownership these are some of the things that we need to talk about and then there's a blank eh blanket power eh to 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 just call ban I know Chaperson you spoke about eh control and not banning but there's a blanket eh eh cloud eh that is given for example when banning the the advertisement about some of these products we need to differentiate eh when we advertise eh these products then there's something that is worrying the bill seeks to give more powers to the minister the minister is a human being and sometimes when they are asked about questions they say well I've been misquoted we cannot grant eh ministers eh blanket power to to take decisions about this because when challenged in court we will have to eh have differentiated about the powers that we're giving and 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 no my time is limited Chaperson I also wanted to talk about eh tobacco and vapor industries when it comes to advertising it's not only about advertising but remember people have the right to information and these industries also have eh 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 the right to reach the consumers and say this is what is happening yes inform the public that eh there's a danger about smoking but give information to the people people will have the right to decide there are other areas that I want to I see Chaperson is saying cut eh time is up thank you Chaperson.
Yeah if there are any other issues please as I've indicated let's be enriched go to the table eh add them there so that you can get other members to participate thanks.
Good morning to the portfolio committee and eh eh community eh my name is Luzaro Jakob Ula eh I'm a medical eh doctor by profession eh and I hope the chair will not frown on me because I know he's a advocate of preventative medicine but I stand to reject the bill eh in its current form eh in line with what eh my learned colleagues have eh expressed the point of contention is the grouping together of tobacco products and eh the electronic nicotine delivery systems eh as they have mentioned that tobacco which is cigarettes and other products contain these harmful eh chemicals in the in the smoke that eh cause health damage more significantly than the delivery eh systems the alternatives the issue with the bill is that it ties our hands as professionals health professionals to offer an alternative eh to our clients who are the population the citizens eh because not everyone is able to quit smoking because nicotine eh although less harmful but it is addictive eh so it's not easy to just quit so it is a democratic right and a choice of a citizen to smoke if they want to we can only educate eh about the effects but we need to be able to offer them healthier or less risky alternatives eh to still satisfy their cravings as they work to 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 quit smoking so in 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 this current format the bill ties our hands because we cannot promote these alternative products so we ask the billmakers to relook at that point and eh review that thank you.
Magen toe de in this current form.
It 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 limits us to promote it it prevents promotion of both tobacco products and the alternatives the electronic nicotine delivery systems so we want a review to separate how we regulate tobacco products and these other ones not grouping of them together thank you.
Good morning my name is Dom Tana Zokolova. I'm a community member and also representing the department of health. First and foremost honorable chair I would like to extend my full support eh of the bill.
Because um saben zo I'm I'm a health promotion practitioner.
Eh my profession I'm a work promotion practitioner.
Working in Gobanong local area in nine towns in Gobanong. Uguchok en die die are educated about about here is kaba is faga kuyo ne behavior.
Eh in a nutshell my work entails educating people about the certain things regarding the. I'll also dwell on the tobacco products how does it impacts eh on the risk of the lives of the people. Our people don't even understand that even the sneeze is categorized under tobacco products. I normally tell people that sniffing is dangerous to the people who are surrounding you whether you do it in a taxi or any environment but it also impacts eh on the people when you are sneezing when you are sniffing it also causes other people to sneeze because of the impact of sniffing. Even the school children now are using this sniffing and they emulate this taking it from their parents and they take it as a fashion and they do it also at schools. There are also risks that are associated with people who are living chronic illnesses if they happen to smoke there are certain risks associated with that.
For example abantu abaa with TB treatment.
For example those people who are on TB treatment. Eh TB treatment is earmatch for six months period therefore if you are smoking it impacts on your health as well. It affects your lungs. And if you happen to smoke whilst living with TB and then you go to the clinic or hospital you find out that the TB is also embedded in your body because of the health risk. Some of the people are asthmatic. A person will maybe smoke a sniff eh next to you. And the the smoke of the sniff will affect the asthmatic person. Some of the people they smoke and then just drop eh the cigarette remains anywhere. Some of the people are fishermen by nature so if you happen to smoke and you leave the cigarette after and then it goes with the water the fishermen will not know that eh there is a harmful substance on that water. From the perspective of the department of health. From the perspective of the Department of Health, we support the bill.
Thank you very much. My name is Ulisen Silemela, volunteer from Cancer Association of South Africa. And I stand for the book and reasons being as follows. Because of the treatment of cancer is very expensive than the actual production of tobacco and nicotine itself. And hence, the effect of cancer also associated with smoking. Tobacco also rips families apart, especially those who cannot afford the treatment as well. Cancer also causes, is caused by non-smoking. If you're smoking cigarettes, nicotine, it causes sixteen more diseases like asthma, your TB, etc. So you get sixteen more diseases from smoking itself besides cancer. Also, it also rips families apart because of the stigma that it also carries within families. We are here to say we also, we want to regulate, minimize, and also we shouldn't expose others to health risks that they've already decided to put themselves in. As the stat already says, 1.2 million have already decided not to smoke but are still affected by those who are smoking. Hence, secondary smoke is also very, very addictive as well. Lastly, lastly, we should also emphasize the smoking of cigarettes, nicotine in rehab centers where it is also produced as it's better than as for drugs as it also causes addiction and it also causes the sixteen more diseases as also previously mentioned. We will finally also want to say we want to regulate, minimize, and not to expose others who decide not to smoke, like your fellow waiters who will be serving you in a restaurant, in a smoky designated area because of they are not smoking and will be serving smokers. But because of they are so inconsiderate and they are so willing for the job that they want, they forget to think that it is also going to affect them as secondary smoke. So we also unfortunately deciding to say that deciding not to decide is also a decision. If you decide not to decide, you have still made a decision not to decide. Thank you so much.
Right, the last speaker speaks like the people on the table, politicians. Lastly, and then after lastly, many more other points come. So, but you welcome that contribution. And can we then come to this side and see those who want to engage with the portfolio committee?
Can I stand here, I can't, I can't, I can't. Men, so what will you say as many people to feel you comment here?
Right. In the second row, you'll be number one. In the third row, you are number two. Fourth row, oh, okay. You are number three. And then the, hands must stay up. Yes, yeah, I've already, I've already given them one, two, and three. And then in that row, may you are number four. Four, five, six, through the glasses, white shirt. No, before I come to you, black, the black t-shirt, you are seven. Behind you, there is also eight or next to eight. Then there are two hands next to each other, nine, ten. The last one is a light, light blue shirt. Yeah, then all of you then come to the middle in the passage with your chairs. Yeah. While you are coming in, I must really thank the Group A. They were on point. They did not take too much time. They actually were mindful, there are people who are coming after them. I hope the same with the leaders who are now here. You'll accommodate that there are other people who are still wanting to talk to us.
It's very good, thank you, seven group in, but they're good for their talk. Quite the means to top of the point come. And as we have the means of what for now, so I'm a good to the point. And that was a moment of chance can get.
So you now know what you are doing. Say your name and surname, where you come from, what is your view on the bean support or not support? Maybe educate us about one, two, three, four points. Why you feel this way or not this way?
As far as I've learned, it brought, say, as a brief in norm and fun, what for any kind of come in of the event on a stone of me on a stoney and lever down the point of what the shock is.
Okay. The first participant is still writing certain things. So you'll also speak in the language of your choice. There will be interpretation that's going to take place.
I can only talk for me, yes, but I shall talk a bit quicker. As it's actually English is, then what it need to talk to me?
Again, once you are done, you move from the mic with your chair back to where you were seated.
How could you leave, I got to, I got to, I was always out.
When you're on, when you're clear, go back, never be free, you still in, go back to your seat. When you're on, when you're clear, go back, never be free, you still in, go back to your seat.
Are you talking?
Program direct, thank you. My name is Patrick Lehetla.
Branch Secretary of South African Communist Party.
Branch Secretary of South African Communist Party.
Fesile Bashola Branch in Jekesonde.
Fesile Bashola Branch in Yaxasfonden.
Chairperson, yes, what we are here about? I read and understood everything.
But they have loopholes, there are some loopholes. That's why I'm saying that I'm not supporting this bill. Chairperson, you said that about eight million people are dying because of tobacco-related illnesses. The question is, has the portfolio committee conducted a research to find if there is a cure or medicine that can be used to deter people from using tobacco-related products? The whole of this bill? How is law, how is the law going to be enforced? Because even the law enforcement is smoking or using tobacco-related products.
We are not, we got the, got the.
This, this bill is not talking about the habit.
How we got it?
It's not talking about the wrong talk. What some people normally put in the mouth.
How we got it?
It's not talking about the sniff.
How we got it?
It's not talking about drugs.
Portfolio Committee, Health Department.
Portfolio Committee of Health has allowed the sale of Dacha or marijuana. To make soap and other products, but this Dacha is being smoked. Chairperson, I'm getting more worried when I speak about Dacha. And this law of cigarettes is being strengthened. The question is, the portfolio committee is assisting who to open a business? Or is assisting who to manufacture a cigarette made of Dacha? When the portfolio committee was busy analyzing or looking at this bill. There's high unemployment rate in South Africa. How many people are going to lose jobs because of the contents of this bill? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity, Director. I greet the Parliament members and I greet the members of the community. My name is Yandisa Utu. My name is Yandisa Utu and I'm a medical practitioner. I've been practicing family medicine for the past three years. I reside in Madihetha, what to community where I'm aspiring to open a general practice. I stand in this position to say that the bill has varied points. But currently, I do stand to reject the bill because of some of the issues it did not address. So the main reason for rejecting the bill currently is that we as healthcare providers see patients who smoke on a daily basis. So, and the group adult tobacco survey that was conducted here in South Africa by the MRC has said that approximately about forty-two percent of smokers have visited a healthcare provider and they were advised to cease or quit smoking. And then in September last year, the CDC reported that a less than one in ten adults who tried to quit smoking, they did a failure. So it is true that we do like advise like smoking cessation. However, looking at the level of failure or the failure rate that we are seeing, something been tried like replacement therapies to which the patients, they not always adhere to. We have seen some patients who have come back to see us in the healthcare facilities, both in the public and the private, and said that they have tried to use the non-combustibles forms or alternative forms. And they felt like they were more empowered over their addictions. And some, which is a very, very, very rare number, they reported to have won against it. So I think it is a recommendation that maybe some of the resources be directed maybe towards the research and the studies that want to look at the alternatives as we have seen the level of failure when we're talking about cessation. Or maybe we might look at the alternative methods, maybe as another way maybe of tapering down in order to cease or in order to stop. I'll just make an example, even though not hundred percent related, maybe of a patient that we put on steroids, maybe the patient was studied on the seven comma five milligrams doses. We do not just stop them like abruptly. So what we normally do maybe for a week or two, we taper that dosage to five and then for another week, we taper it into two and then we cease giving that medication. So that example was to enforce maybe that alternative method should be looked at. As some of the study, they reported that non-combustibles, they give less harm. They are harmful, yes, but harm reduction or risk reduction strategies. I also recognize by the way with the health organization. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. And because of the district of Iff. Can I, I'm the Chairperson of the Iff in the Harim district. My name is Mulei. Chairperson, I'm standing here by standing as in Iff members that approving the bill. But we are in support of the bill in relation to the control of smoking. The restrictions of the sale of tobacco, including the provisions not to display tobacco product in shops. However, Chairperson, even this binding machine, I also approve, they must not sell it then to the tobacco via it because it doesn't ask the person their ages. They just put the money aside by the machine. Chairperson, I'd like to, is this, I think you did give the minister a huge responsibility while maybe other issues has been attended by the Member of Parliament. Thank you very much.
Okay, because I know this leader, go and sit next to that gentleman there. That gentleman is going to come to the mic, but a bit late. Go back, I'll recognize you as number two. Local is Lecker. This is Dutch.
Thank you so much, Chairperson, and greetings to you at the committee. My name is Oshima Mashila. I'm from Wachabel, what three. I'm a researcher by profession. I hold PhD, I hold Master of Science in Economic Economics and currently studying PhD in the same field. The Chairperson, the paragraph two of the preamble states that the bill calls for strong action to encourage existing users to quit. But then the main question is, what about those smokers who cannot quit? Because they are struggling and some of them actually they are addicted. So because of this, Chairperson, I would like to submit to you that I'm against the current bill in this, in its current form. The recently published concrete report states that six percent of smokers successfully quit when using the continual placement therapies. But what about the remaining ninety-four percent? Maybe I think that at least let's just try other alternatives instead of just saying let's quit completely. The electronic nicotine delivery system are less harmful than cigarettes and more effective than nicotine replacement therapies. That's a report by concrete that was published in the year twenty twenty-three. The UK government has actively encouraged smokers to consider using e-cigarette as a way out of smoking as it has recognized the role that science-based innovation play in reducing harm. To show the government, to show the UK government support as part of their sort to stop scheme, they are encouraging smokers to swap to electronic nicotine delivery system as it has been proven that they are less harm than the cigarette. So Chairperson, I would like to say that us as a country, let's at least support the UK government with their decision and then let's try to adopt what they are trying to adopt. Our government should assess the science of this novel product and follow such examples as the UK to ensure that we reach smoke-free status in our lifetime and improve public health for all South Africans. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairperson, and
Thank you very much, Chairperson, and this committee. Firstly, I'm Tavram Shaba. I hereby represent Youth in Power Afrika Reis Movement in Shottiepa. Actually, I say in the Drogov Young People in Africa. We advocating for public health issues that affect the youth. Currently, we exist in South Africa, Kenya, Zambia, and Nigeria. And advocating for tobacco control policies, tuberculosis, HIV and AIDS, as well as sexual reproductive health and rights, SRHR. I support the bill because of, okay, we've been told that tobacco in all its form includes, including snif, habli, bubli, and electronic cigarettes is harmful to health. If you can check especially with habli, when coming to the youth, the current youth is using a device called habli. This habli bubli thing, they're using it everywhere, including in all public areas and parks. And actually, they see this as an opportunity, for example, if maybe you are successful in life, you should actually take these things. That's how they see it. So I support the bill because of it actually neutralizes the loopholes of the tobacco industry, you know, towards the youth. When coming to banning of e-cigarettes to be smoked in the public areas, actually, this causes a huge, you know, public health problem. Because of, you know, because of firstly, it causes secondhand smoking, which means it can be pregnant women or a minor, maybe standing in front of the smoker, and then the smoke comes, you know, to the person who is, you know, who's not supposed to drink. Motoloreng, Arthur, and all of them, so.
There may be some, sorry, there may be some people who are not supposed to smoke but getting affected in the meantime.
When coming to pictorial health warnings, Leona, it plays a role when coming to also the youth. For example, hemwana havana picture mukwaieng.
When a child sees the picture on the tobacco packaging?
Picture eh, eh, maybe a lung, eh, yamwana.
If that picture is showing a lung with infection?
Or picture eh, eh, maybe mutumuspatlwa, analikens, analidisozinchi.
If maybe a picture also is showing the face of somebody who's got some stuff on the face.
So hofita, eh, hemwana ke mouswa. Otloze ba orbaran tue, ke kelehi su, ina bill hengka itzi.
So those who see such pictures will be detained because they will be knowing that if I touch this thing, there's some danger in it.
So ke onaloreng ke support are in terms of protecting the youth. Eh, bilabila hobalalani.
So I support.
Hobalalani, tobacco billika, ukawo, yonaka mukweli kademi. Protect our youth who breaks at these products because of it's a threat.
Honestly, the tobacco bill as easy as protecting the youth.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Thank you, Chairperson. I also thank the Parliament representatives that are seated here. My name is Munayela Muiti from Watshaven. From Aron Mohumutzi branch. From Aron Mohumutzi branch. I'm not supporting this bill. Because those people who facilitated the workshop at what forest?
Forest.
At forest.
Okay, just help us there. Sit down right, because if you are going to do phrases, we're not here. You see, the other interpreters, they get the person to finish a sentence, then they interpret. If you need to write down what this she say, better do so.
This bill is going to give problems over problems. There's more poverty in our communities. Because our people make a living out of this tobacco. There are unemployed women who are on the streets. Who are also selling snif.
Sneak boxer.
Boxer. So that when they go home. So that their kids can have something to eat using such. The most important thing that we must do. We must teach people about the dangers of tobacco. Teach people, educate people about. Even those people who are doing home-based care in their townships, they must educate people about the dangers of tobacco. Rather than making electronic systems for drugs. Our kids are dying of drugs. We are just sitting and watching. That's why I'm saying it's going to cause. The community is not doing anything that's. If I may ask a question from Parliament about. Kids are in the street, they are smoking illegally. They are not going to school. They are just sitting there at home. I'm coming to the issue of taverns. To control who's supposed to smoke and who's not supposed to smoke. You are an adult, you've got an ID, move away from people who are smoking. We know that smoking is dangerous. Even those who are using vaping. This is what I'm using because even the people who are using dacha have got their own. As a result, dacha uses legalized. Because the people have been using dacha for a long time. I don't mind the issue of making people. Let's concentrate on controversial. Let's concentrate on things. How do we make our kids go back? There must be good educative information in schools. There must be rules in our schools. Even in churches. There must be rules in the churches so that people can be educated. I don't support the bill that is being launched here. Some will support or believe you, but there must be prior education. Tobacco is. Even in your house. Even your husband must go out to smoke.
You know, in church or whenever I see Baruth, one phrase, no, one phrase, no, let's improve on that one. There's no duty like they do in the church where they, every phrase, another one, that maybe it's fine. But let us get a participant to at least finish a sentence. Write down what the participant is saying, then you come to the mic. We don't do like in courts or in the church, where there's every, we lose each other. Akulu when you do it that way, okay? Please, I'm going to see the interpretation, thank you. Pen and paper will help you. Thanks.
My problem is extremely sad, maybe. The problem is on the talu, is on the talu, but it's not my. Us, habredis snif, um, unser hui, it's in, opas, and aldego, nader tekri, um, us, galak teke. Now, as the toak mit gur, verweiderholt, and the snif wird verweider. Who create, yo, galu, mit anehwolke, yo, mit yo, galu, ok, no, vech, mit, terwille van toak, and terwille van die snif. Die Billstempel nicht sah, ne, van, ons, 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 it's not the eel, the, 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 selde, galu, eel. Elkejen het zijn galu. Ons maak galu, ma, daar, die swert goed, wat ons moet gebrij. Ons zijn die kinders moet het gebrij. Dele maak niet, die goed gebrij, nu maar, toak is die wat moet gebrij worden, als je galu maak. En die andere ding is, allemaal praat van die toak, en de dacha, en die wat, maale, praat niet van die mandreks, en die pillen, en die goed wat die kinders maal maken. Zoals ik soep praat, daar is krom kinders wat maal is, van die mandreks. En die ARVs, pillen, wat die kliniek krijgt, dan verkoopt, pillen dit, dat die kinders dit dan kan boek. Die mensen met daar woed, julle moet kijk, die, 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 die. Die kabelman moet kijk, verselke goed, wat gebeur in die jille district. Die mandreks en die, die, die ARVs en die dinges, is baie, 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 gevaarlijkker, als die toak en die snif en die dacha. Daar goed is die goed wat die gemeenschap onderkrijgt, van baie kinders, is nou, die, die, allemaal, allemaal, van die riem, die riem kan niks metelen. Die, die, die kabelman moet zelke goed kijk, danke.
I guess, I could not name, but the name is funny, ANC and so, oh, sorry, I'm so sorry. The lady said she's from the ANC and her main problem is that they use the tobacco products to, in their religion. And when you take away the tobacco products, you're gonna take away an aspect of their religion, which is very important to them. They also say that it is dangerous for children to get these things. And but that is a part of, the children are doing man drugs and they're selling the ARVs that they get from the clinics as drugs or compounds to make drugs with. And they smoke their tablets instead of using it for what is prescribed. And we, she wants the government to please look at that rather than tobacco.
Okay, thank you, Chairperson, and the members of the Portfolio on Health. Someone, someone just to adjust the mic for him, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, General Director, and members of the Portfolio on Health. I support the bill. Of course, I don't see any reason, how can you not support something that promotes health? And, and if the bill becomes an act, ultimately, at the moment, a nation will benefit. Because a product, a healthy nation is a productive nation. So one thing, one thing that, that I have a problem with is, is the question of, I've heard some members of the officials of Parliament say, when they went to a place, they said, when, when, when the bill is going to be, the bill is going to be an act, some people are going to be penalized. People are going. Men for, for transgressing the act. So I've got a problem with that because, only on that one. Because you don't solve one problem and then create other problems. Because if currently now, currently now, the criminal justice department is already overwhelmed and they've got a bad lot of cases. So if now we criminalize, if we do this now, I do support it, but coming to penalties, I've got a problem on that one. Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah, we missed, we missed to know your name. I'm Tumelo, Tumelo, Isaac Africa from Forest.
My name is Lisho Honolo, and I have been, let me say the opportunity, that has been granted to me by this committee.
And also I would like to observe protocol to the front table. Lawyer can deposition, lawyer can government, or not, or provincial, or district, or local municipality. Labor, etabli, kaka, kaka, by the branches. Chair, I would like to concur with the tobacco control, under one motive. Having a smoke-free generation in our lifetime. Particularly, I would like to mention this one. A hundred free, a hundred, a hundred smoke-free indoor areas. I'm going to make a practical example. My younger sister, she's working in a restaurant around town. The unfortunate part of that restaurant is that her boss, a more deployed, around the restaurant, omu is a placing along in the smoking area place, and she's pregnant. So each and every time when I visit home, otlave, alawakule, and all that. So that is one of the reasons why I can't support the bill. Let me, let me continue, when I chairperson. Depending of the sale, the sale of tobacco and any other product. As, as a community leader, we are having this young boys around Tromsberg. I'm from Tromsberg, by the way. I think they are at the age of thirteen to seventeen years. Among them, there is this one by the name of General. I think if I'm seeing General, then you are getting the picture, you welcome food off him, I would. They are smoking, they are not playing, those boys. So if a boy could walk from home, I figure his doors, like Mohammed, I think his cigarette pack, Mohammed, Mohammed, Amnik, at that age. What is the meaning of that? I'm, I'm concurring with this bill under one motive, I can share. Let us, let us get control of easy access. We are not saying, I'm not saying whoever that is smoking must leave, must quit smoking, no. But I'm just saying that I'm concurring with this bill because you go everywhere. Scaretta, so when you get there, as a minor can get a cigarette, so, 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 so. I think that then I will not share. Yes, some of us, we are watching this as care. But we are not saying, ha, this is, we are only saying, as it closely shelfing, how many airport that says cigarettes available, like your Etay. I get a time here, we will, they will sell you a time via that machine. How I get time at twenty hundred, then they will give you a time, also more, that's, that's what, I was, that's what I understand about the bill. So in, in a nutshell, when I chairman, I, I concur as a young person who, who is a former regional secretary of the IFF and currently a leader within the ANC itself, the vice-chairperson of the clinical committee within Tromsberg, a chairperson of an NGO, PKR. A chairperson of an NGO, PKR.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dineo Drum from Bosavelo. I'm coming from Mama Room, Motel Advancing Health Movement. And I'm also coming from the clearly HIV sector, under the Mama Room district. I'm in support of the bill. Because when you look at the health perspective, as a young people, as a young person living with HIV. Uh, the consumption of tobacco substances is not only affecting the victims, but it's affecting everyone. Because if you are sitting next to the person who is smoking, smoking is inhaling, it means you, you are also inhaling. And, and it can impact your health in a negative way. Because you will be getting the diseases as a chronic person. And then it is also affecting us as people living with HIV. Because people who are under the, 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 the influence of, of, of tobacco substances. If they are, they are under the influence, they are still in our ERVs, there's, there will be a shortage of ERVs in our local facilities. And it is also affecting other people's life because people are going to default. And then again, the tobacco consumption is also increasing the crime in our communities. Because people, if they are under the influence, they commit crimes. And then I should also encourage the parliament to also consider the rehab centers for the victims of, of tobacco consumptions. And it also should be for free because when you look at the tobacco consumptions, they are youth under. What I would like to say is, when we look at our South African constitution, everyone has the right to life. So if, if one is using or is under the influence of tobacco, it's affecting another's person's life, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. All protocol, the review of, of, uh, my name is Dr. Ade Labou, I'm from University of Free State. I'm a medical research scientist from the Faculty of Health Sciences. And also a member of a non-profit organization, which is called Am Reduction in Sub-Saharan Africa. And as a group of am reduction expert, we are dedicated to delivery appropriate quality patient care supported with the latest scientific evidence-based data. Patient advocacy and public health are an integral focus of our society. And today, I would like to focus on the research related to electronic nicotine delivery systems. Which subsequently I'll be using as end. To this end, I reject the bill with regards to end. And I will address this shortly in three aspects, which are toxicological evidence, quit rate for smoking cessation. And safety of end. If smokers are not encouraged to switch to end, they will continue to smoke. And according to the data in twenty, of twenty twenty-one, South Africa has approximately ten million smokers. And on the continent, about seventy-seven million smokers. That means one person dies every six to eight seconds from a smoking-related disease. Now to my submission, the first evidence, the toxicological evidence produced by the United States Food and Drug Administration. And as you all know, that this agency is a leading authority in the world of end regulation. And this agency has authorized the sale of twenty-seven e-cigarettes and its devices. In addition, it has also authorized the sale of it-not-burn and snows products. And these products have undergone a thorough evaluation. The FDA uses a standard called APPH, which stands for, for the protection of the public health. This standard shows the net benefit to public health based on the risk and benefit of end to the population as a whole. Which includes youth. And I wish to emphasize that the use of end in youth has been taken into account in the assessment of net benefits. As an example, the FDA evaluated, uh, it-not-burn product. And they demonstrated that potential carcinogens were reduced by approximately eighty-two percent. In the aerosol of this product, relative to the smoke of the reference combustible cigarette. And the respiratory toxicant were reduced by ninety-two percent. And they concluded that HNB product was up to ninety-nine percent safer than combustible cigarette. And to my second evidence, quit rate with end. This was reported by the concrete, by the, by the Coach Green Collaboration in twenty twenty-four. They are the world-leading authority on the systematic review of all the literature and evidence. This was, I certainly, there was high certainty evidence that nicotine is significant, significantly increased. Quit rate compared to nicotine replacement therapy. Ends, e-cigarettes are more effective than nicotine replacement therapy, which is the standard of care. Further evidence has shown sharp decline in smoking rate with countries that are pro-THR rapidly about. To reach the World Health Organization's smoke-free target than anti-THR policy countries. And for example.
The rest of that you will give to the table, okay? Um, I'm coming to this side. To look at the hands that are coming from this side. Okay, those who'd like to speak to, man, I'm sure they're losing, just take your chairs and move to the middle there. Uh, there are other three leaders I asked, who would bang us in the corner. For them, okay? Uh, I've taken all the hands that were on that side. I now have to recognize the other three leaders that I said, because you are national, you come, uh, having given the priority. So you go the back there, uh, that leader, I also stopped, I also stopped you. So I said, you come at the back. That will be the last. Let us our last engagement for today. Get your chairs, so you do the same. For those who might be disadvantaged, because you are not designed, you stand up, give us your name, say name, where you come from. And your view on the bill, for the bill or against the bill, blah, blah, blah. These are my reasons, two, three, four. If you have got a dossier, like a last speaker, who had the four pages, you send it there. We will not be able to listen to your four pages, but you can read it at our own time. Hence the table available to take some of that information. Um, I was afraid that he says, and he forget it, uh, in for him, come proud. Mars tell us a brief, he's our first said, no, fun, in body, from the angle, in the mark, it is submissive. Okay, let me then see the very last hand there. The, was that the one, the black shirt, T-shirt, right, that would be the last. You then start a few minutes of what you want us to know, then any language of your choice, there will be assistance on interpretation, yeah.
The name is, uh, Cilis Olifina. Uh, I support, uh, the bill as it is. And, uh, there are, there are so many people who grew up smoking and it is difficult to stop smoking. The problem is more with the youth and they need some assistance that will help them to stop smoking. I also support the issue of the packaging, where, uh, there will be some indication of, uh, how risky the tobacco is. Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Karabelo, and I am from the before. Um, I'm here supporting the bill because.
You are from where?
Lungfente.
Okay.
Um, here supporting the bill for it is. But it is against the exposure or the promotion of it. This is to protect the confused, all the angry, the teens and nonsmokers. Smoking or secondhand smoking is associated with fifteen types of cancer, which is a very terrifying, um, disease. Um, secondhand smoking or rather smoking in general, it harms the brain development during adolescence. Um, it causes infant death syndromes, lung cancer and heart disease. Which leads to most raised and suffering to family members. I thought I then support this bill because as we are, we are promoting a clean and a healthy environment. Not a polluted and a sick environment, thank you.
Uh, the name is Cilis Olifina, I support this bill hundred percent. And I encourage the education to the community or to the machines so that they can understand. TB, that those who are suffering from TB are usually affected by smoking, even if it's passive smoking. And there are also those who are suffering from asthma, who are also easily affected. Uh, when there is somebody who is, uh, smoking around them, thank you.
Okay, you may decide committee, let's chat about that. Now, can you simply cover, so mona Tromsberg, one two. Now personally, can you tell the fellow, who support the bill, that some of the. The current regulations, how on a move, this like this one thing, the enforce one thing, or but what about the. Get that, 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 this is a hard, but I'm on a, in Canada. Billie, it's like, if you do like in town completely, but it needs to be so, yeah, it's. Most likely, the tabbing, it's a, it's a, my, my zone, how on a, my, my, my. Who's our government, I don't enforce, or the, what, what, to go, and what's given to be, and what's, what's been done. How on a, my, my, then, got it, have any, but it's, but it's, but it's, yeah, it's, have any, but it, let it, it's, you're like, I'm telling. The ahelung, the government, how on a, more, unangli, designated areas, so it's been. But to be la, what's, what, and how so, come on, Lee, more like, oh, and for swag, me, like, eating, carrying, or, but, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm. And by the private sector, the, the private hospitals, how few, I'm so, who, who, on a, money, who, who, designated place or space. More, but what, men, let's, we, who, who, it's, it. And by who, not, refail what the government do, or, or, a little regulations, they're all, they're in, how, if man, I was be laos in one, I'm not, I'm not, I am one, two, three. And by six, bonanza, it's a halal, once be in a pass. Here, but to baruna, but no, fine, no, Baba, but no, twaro, once, but I respect the regulations, since I do one day. And by the food, to go, and for, this, and they're already. So, give money, that I follow, and do in jolo, cause it, so, community, at Tromsberg, here, have been, he got pass. Give on a fella, hands, it, 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 ma, 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 aditubi, si, si, put, so, yaka, ye. In the current regulations, is there a regulation, nka ba, is there a way, more to be, dealing, to support, what, de?
Thank you.
My name is Mohana Subotse, I'm from Blovene. I support the bill that stands against the regulation of... I stand with the bill because it does not go along with the ban of tobacco, but it stands with regulating the use of it. Students, and not only them, but teenagers also, infected by the social influence of tobacco being used in public spaces. It does not only affect them in terms of influence, but in their academia also. They are failing to attain the correct treatment in academia because it goes straight to their brains and everything, and that comes in terms of health too. And not only does it affect that sector, but it also affects our country's sector in terms of economy-wise. People are finding a good space in settling in, using tobacco as a source of income, and finding it easy to regulate it to people that are not at the right age of using it. People who are younger than eighteen. And that is not right because it's affecting youngsters who are not yet developed enough to use the tobacco. So I highly support the bill.
Greetings to the House at large. My name is Lee Dewey. I'm from Blovene. I support the bill because eighty percent of the smokers start before they are eighteen. Meaning now it's affecting our youngsters more than adults. And I feel like the bill supports the... The bill is supporting people to quit smoking. And it also is raising awareness about the dangers of smoking. Because most of the tobacco packages have designs and everything, which leads to people wanting to smoke more. And I feel like the bill is decamerizing the smoking packages. And the bill is supporting hundred percent smoke-free indoors and outdoor public spaces. And in that way, it's gonna reduce the number of youngsters who are smoking in our communities, leading to a healthier environment for our future.
Greetings everyone. I'm Charlotte Sola, from Oudvink in Blovene. I'm also a regional member from the Afrikanische Partij. This bill gives the minister a whole inch of powers in terms of the powers to the safe of eleven of that way this order should be seen. And these are the powers that should be given by the parliament to make laws. But all in all, I highly support the bill. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Greetings Chairperson and the committee. Sichabaza Trompelsberg. Yerhotomu di maybeli. Chairperson, today I'm going to be delivering a message of support from... It's a joint message from South African Tobacco Freedom Forum here in Free State and the Young Communists League of South Africa, which are Amakomanisahabli. A greetings chair, we fully support the bill. As our objective is to intensify the development of positive social behavioral pattern and promote public health. We firstly would like to salute the South African Pharmacy Council for rejecting electronic delivery systems and acknowledging that the harm reduction is through public health policies. Pictorial health warnings. We view pictorial warnings as a significantly effective model of information delivery and as a way to accommodate and consider South Africans living with Afasia and Hypothermia. This is supported by the Framework Convention on Tobacco Control to have continuous health awareness education. Removal of point-of-sale marketing. The current legislation already restricts marketing of tobacco products. The point-of-sale display is contextually an in-store marketing and the space is being paid for as it is already viewed as a commercial activity and on counter-branding. All tobacco giants in South Africa are saying they are committed to ensure the reduction of marketing in their ESG reports, but change it when it's time to discuss policies. The idea that this bill will spark illicit trade is a lie. The bill will achieve a public health goal to reduce demand of these lethal products. We have noticed with shame the continuous attempts by the tobacco industry to try and convince the public that the bill is going to affect employment and small businesses. However, the small businesses in our poor communities are solely there to supply consumer goods such as bread and milk. The harsh reality is that the illicit cigarettes are consumed as a matter of affordability and not availability. As the informal traders have both mainstream brands and illicit cigarettes on their tables. Our brothers continue to ask for turens at pasar shops just to buy cigarettes. If these products are enslaving young people and degrade their dignity, then it's lower the product that must be fashionable. Although consumer price index in South Africa looks still within the rate considered favorable. The marginal propensity to consume in South African remains at reverse due to high smoking prevalence after introduction of electronic cigarettes. The population is growing, but smoking rate is consistent in raising this. In raising, this means that there are more smokers than before. Chairperson, as we conclude, Karl Marx on Das Kapital states that accumulation of wealth at one pole is at the same time accumulation of misery. Agony of toil, slavery, ignorance, brutality, mental degradation at the opposite pole. The tobacco industry does not declare to SARS fifty-four percent of their products, which undermines the laws of this country and the bill through punishable penalties will be able to eradicate such behaviors. Thank you very much. I will just write down the rest. Thank you Chair.
Da begash.
Good afternoon Chair members of the Portfolio Committee of Health and the Public at Large. My name is Lorraine Govindel and I'm the National Manager for Health Programs at the Cancer Association of South Africa. We at the Cancer Association as well as the volunteers fully support this bill. Why? This bill is a strong piece of legislation that closes loopholes and addresses aspects not covered by the current tobacco law, such as proper regulation of Novell products, including e-cigarettes. Now members of the public, why is this bill so important to you as well as the government? It is here to save lives. It is here to reduce tobacco use. It is here to dissuade children from starting to use tobacco products as well as electronic delivery systems, which is the e-cigarettes and vapes. Now we at the Cancer Association receive numerous complaints from the members of the public. Firstly, why are children as young as eleven buying vapes? Why is there such an increase in prevalence of e-cigarettes among our youth? Why are children, young children in primary school, able to buy loose cigarettes from people who pretend to be selling sweets and chocolates? Now these are concerns that are definitely coming from the public and we believe that this bill will definitely support our people. Now, we also want to say that this... How many of you are aware that it costs our country forty-two billion a year to treat tobacco-related illnesses? Now we know oncology treatment in our country is high. We've seen it on the news. We've heard lots of people talking about the fact that they can't access good oncology treatment. The waiting periods are long. And these are people that are not really involved in using tobacco products or any other products that can cause cancer. They are innocent people that are not able to access proper oncology treatment because of issues related to, you know, using alcohol, tobacco, and things that can really help prevent cancer. So we at the Cancer Association really believe that this current tobacco law will support people, will reduce lives, will save lives as well. So we also... I'm not sure if people are really aware of the number of people die early as a result of using tobacco products. And much of this information is available to you if you look at the Cancer Association's website. In South Africa, over twenty-five thousand people die from tobacco-related illnesses each year. And this is not just something that I'm just saying. It's there. Research is available. The GATS survey has also proved this. So thank you Chair for allowing me to share this with you today. Good afternoon.
Greetings to you Chair as well as the committee and the committee members of Trompelsberg. I really appreciate the opportunity. My name is Lesseho Mademe and I'm from the South African Tobacco Freedom Forum. First and foremost, I would like to point out two key aspects of the bill, which is the protection of vulnerable groups, especially the young people and non-smokers. We should be careful as well because I've heard previous speakers talking about the many benefits of e-cigarettes. We should be careful in painting vapes as safe because that is nothing from the truth. The vapor that is spoken of does not only contain nicotine, but also other flavors and chemicals. In fact, there's a report that shows that, you know, shows evidence that the nicotine intake in e-cigarettes is amongst, you know, experienced e-cigarette users as adults. It's almost the same as that is found in combustible tobacco products or such as cigarettes. Additionally, the report has shown conclusive evidence that in addition to nicotine, most e-cigarette products contain elements numerous potentially toxic substances. There's also evidence that shows that the chemicals that are present in e-cigarettes, you know, are capable of causing DNA damage, which supports the fact that e-cigarettes can in the future cause cancer. Lastly though, and most importantly, there is substantial evidence that shows that e-cigarettes increase the risk of ever-using combustible tobacco products such as cigarettes amongst young people and young adults. This is most concerning because the Global Adult Tobacco Survey of twenty-twenty-one has estimated that there's a lot of young people, close to three hundred thousand of young people between the ages of fifteen and twenty-four who use these products. Honorable members, I'd like to say that the vaping industries' alleged attempt at providing safer alternatives for adults to quit smoking should not come at the expense of young people. Especially since studies are pointing that using e-cigarettes ever young person increases the risk of ever-using traditional cigarettes. The same cigarettes, traditional cigarettes that is, that these e-cigarette companies are trying to so hard to test themselves from. In conclusion, if vaping companies really do care about helping adult smokers quit smoking, I would like to invite them to stop advertising their products on social media. At platforms and spaces that are dominated by millions of South African youth because their target market is clearly not they. Additionally, I'd like to also invite them to stop using influencers who have white teenage and youth audiences because their target market again does not consume the content that these influencers produce. The industry is to be clear with their intention. Is it really to help, you know, people who smoke to quit smoking or is it other things? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much. A round of applause to all those who are brave to come to the mic. Thank you very much. Let me share this information as is. One of the parliamentary staff has come to me to say food will be served, but they would like to get volunteers who not want to participate on the food so that it could be available for some of us. And I've already started here in the table to canvass that we participate less or not participate on the food to allow those who really have been here since the morning and have come from far to have some lunch. Now, we learn a lot when we come to these meetings. And I suppose somebody was saying the bill... Yes? There will be security that will put me on that path, okay?
There is, there is a lady outside there who's issuing out stickers. She just denied one lady, one mama from Trompelsberg particularly, to enter the hearing, saying to her that she's only here to... She's only here for the food. Can you please address that problem? You can't have people who treating other people like that, it is. Because if I would go myself there, she would tear open my mouth.
There will not be any stickers that will be issued now at half past twelve. Stickers were issued on entry.
Yeah, but it's fine. Can you address, can you address the issue? Chair, can you address the issue? That is my problem. She can't, she can't address it.
They will, when I sit down, there will be people from parliament who will assist us with that part.
Thank you.
So number two, those stickers that you have, please keep them on you. They will assist you in the event they give you lunch. If you remove the sticker, they will then take that sticker away from you. If you resist and you come without a sticker and say, please, I haven't had lunch, they will not give you. Because there are areas where we have been, where people have been served and they come for the second helping. We ask them, where is the sticker? Oh no, they didn't give me. So the sticker that you have here is to allow you to enter this meeting and sometimes to assist us when we are actually giving lunch to you. Anyone who wants to try it a bit?
Um, volgens de indrukking dat ons ontvang is gaan daar binnen kort kostbedienbord, ons vraag van vrijwilligers wat kan voor ons helpen. En ons vraagt ons zodat de mensen wat van vroeg voorochtend afheersen wat van ver gekomen en dat nog niet geëerd het niet dat alle eerste kan eten. En dan niet door die twee plakkens of stickers wat ons ontvang heeft dragen bij. Die moet het niet verwijderen, want zonder de plakkentje gaan ons niet voor die kost geven. Die plakkentjes of stickers helpen ons met die organisatie in die toeladig door die zaal.
I agree that we will not be issuing new stickers at quarter to one. But there should still be a polite way to address that. To say, no, you arrived at quarter to one. Sorry, we will not give you any more stickers because we are wrapping up the meeting now. So that part, we apologize if it was not handled in a polite manner, but there will not be any new stickers to be issued now. Miss Hunter, I'm glad you're here and I'm glad you're writing down because it looks like when you come to parliament, you'll have to assist us with certain things that have come up here which regards to can the table there assist us to have a discussion much more softer than there. You will assist us with some of the issues that are coming from the community regarding the bill. Because those things are important to us. There's another one speaker who talked about illicit drugs. To say, you need to continue saying something, as the Department of Illicit, even though it's not within your space to control, but it is within your review to say this has... It's clouding things that you are talking about if nobody is consistently addressing the issues of illicit drugs and illicit tobacco into our country. Nobody is willing to tap into it.
Om de plakkentje te geven kwart voor een iedere tijd van de middag, zoals amper klaar is, gaan ons niet doen, maar daar behoorlijk oflicheme in hier te weten waarom ons die kant aan te huren. Die daar wordt bijgebracht door verboden middels. En ons zet het verdonker, die kwestie die verboden middels en dat is niet heel te behoor binnen ons machten om andere middels als tabak anders te spreken. Maar ons is een reinte waren, kan het steem hierdoor voor in de zon ons dan doen.
One young person totally see the term. It must glamorize. So I suppose I was interpreting it as a youth language, maybe to remove the glamour out of whatever, so it's a glamorize. But I want to thank the young people who were also participating very strongly. Because look, I can talk about this bill at my age. It has less to do with me, probably with my grandchildren. So if young people come here and address us on this bill, it's very welcoming. Because they talk about more about their future. It's twilight for some of us. The bill is about them and our grandchildren.
Onz het gewerkt dat die tabakbedrijf een glansreikke beeld vooraat en die wetgeving het bij men met mij te doen als een oude persoon. Dit gaat meer over jong mensen en bij men met die oude mensen. Meer voor die jong mensen.
Just lastly, the Portfolio Committee is not very much strong on doing research, but we do call researchers to educate us about other things. So we are not very strong in that part as part of our work. For that member who was saying we must go and do our research, maybe the advice to us, let's call people who are skilled on some of these things to educate us and assist us. But we per se do not really go very strong on research.
Die Portefilië comiteer doen niet zelfnauwvoering niet. Die comiteer krijgen geleerde mensen in om voor hun advies te geven, maar niet zelfnauwvoering te doen.
Now, thank you very much for having come in to participate. We will give you an update of where we are in the country with this bill when we finish in the Western Cape. Some of you have indicated that they would like to come and meet still in a face-to-face through your organizations to participate and meet with the Portfolio Committee. That opportunity will still come. But we want to thank this community that has welcomed us and has given us their views on this part.
Onz zegt dankjewel dat die ingekomen voor die vergadering vandaag. Want er is klaar is in die bestkauf, daar is mensen wat gezegd dat allemaal nog graag met die comiteer wil skakelen. Daarvoor zal daar genoemd het bezig, ons zal hier opwachten van verder toekomstige verwekkelingen. En ons wil net bij dankzij aan die comiteer wat vandaag geset is.
Two things that are remaining now. One, it will be one member open for us in a word of prayer. Or it could be another one of the same. And number two, someone from the staff to indicate to us how they are planning to issue the lunch. Someone to come to the table so that I could then after the prayer announce that. Whoever is praying for us to end this meeting must also pray for the good food, hope that it is good food that we are going to have. Me, kiwela, o, 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 binale. O, krill, o, binale. Aridule Fazi, just wait for the announcement as to how they will serve us. Okay, now, we will use this door, but this serving of lunch is very discriminatory, okay? But the young people at the back, the elderly and the old mama in the front, okay? You go out this way, there will be people will be serving you there. Thank you. So you know if you are of my age, just stand up and go there.